Yes? This will be for items not listed on the agenda. You would need to come forward, please.
I'm just trying to clarify. Looking at this, I don't see my street listed, but I was given a letter that said that we need to be here tonight for Falcon Drive. Is that in? Is it on agenda today?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, we have no approval of minutes this evening. So we have four, well, three quasi judicial hearings and one legislative hearing this evening. So I'll have to read my legal script. So bear with me while we go through this technical information, which I probably won't be able to see because I forgot my glasses. I should let you read it tonight. Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll let my vice president read it.
Vice President.
Now, who's Ben?
The Chair.
Chair.
Vice Chair. Okay. Okay, on land use applications are scheduled tonight. A staff report has been prepared for each application, has been made available seven days before tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with written comments and input received through the public notification process for each application. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart, which is right there. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a yellow slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they are submitted into the record. Person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing a continuance or to keep the record open must take that request before the public hearing is, must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must be, must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, ORS 197.796 requires us to announce the following. The failure, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Okay, so we have, I believe we're having a continuation on ZC 04-03, PD 04-02, and WR 04-12. Is that correct, Mr. Conkle?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Has the applicant asked for a date certain?
Yes, and we were going to continue this to September 13th, 2004. Their attorney was out of town. We were unable to contact him. When he did return, he had a conflict on the night of September 13th. But for this, just, this is more clarification, what we're going to do is, we're going to continue it to September 13th. On that night, we're going to continue it again until September 27th because we've sent out notice. And so we will renotice again just to make sure everyone is on the same page. But that's the plan due to scheduling conflict between, with the attorney of the applicant.
Okay.
So tonight's request is to continue it to September 13th. We'll come back on the 13th and continue it 14 more days at that point.
Okay. All righty, do we have a motion without effect?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the second to continue to September 13th. Zoning change 04-03, planned development 04-02, and a water resource 04-12.
Commissioner Orzen.
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoie.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Chair Pershing Carter.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda tonight is a legislative issue. The City of Oregon City is requesting adoption by ordinance to revisions of the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan map, the zoning ordinances, and the zoning map. They were adopted on May 19th, 2004, and these are just some opportunities to go back and clean up some things that we're sort of progressing on, so.
Okay. Okay. Just to recap, this is proposed file L 03 01. We're reviewing what was adopted earlier this year. The comprehensive plan and code amendments were adopted by the Oregon City Commission on May 19th, 2004. Measure 56 notice was sent out on October 16th, 2003. Properties impacted by the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning changes were notified by a letter from the Community Development Department that was mailed on August 16th of 2004. Ordinance number 03 1014 adopted a new city, Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, a comprehensive plan map, zoning map, and amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. It also adopted a new water and a new sanitary, or sewer master plan as ancillary documents to the comprehensive plan. Section 7 of the adopted ordinance required that the planning commission hold a hearing tonight on August 23rd to take testimony and evidence on the comprehensive plan and plan map, as well as the zoning code and zone map, to consider possible revisions or refinements to what was adopted. Staff has prepared a document with proposed changes to Chapter 2, land use of the comprehensive plan, Chapter 10, housing of the comprehensive plan, changes to Chapter 16, 12, which are the minimum improvements in design standards for subdivisions, as well as several chapters within Chapter 17. As for the comprehensive plan and zoning maps, on the map on the right, which has been included in your document, that's the Oregon City zoning map. What staff has proposed to do is take in several pieces that are zoned R10 currently, which require a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size, and change those to what's called R8, which allows the exact same uses on 8,000 square foot lots. The rationale behind this is that several of these parcels were part of the island annexation, and when we annex a property into the city, it automatically goes to R10 regardless of what's around it. So in these instances, what we have are properties that are, that are surrounded by a majority of R8 properties. So to provide consistency throughout the city and provide consistent lot sizes with the neighbors that have already been developed out at R8, we're proposing to change these from the R10, 10,000 square foot, to the R8. You'll see most of this is predominantly in South End along Central Point Road, Falcon Drive. Moving on, we have several pieces on Glen Oak Road and Beaver Creek that are near Moss Campus High School and Clackamas Community College. Those pieces were also brought in through the island annexation process. Unlike the residential properties, which when they're annexed, they automatically receive a zoning designation of R10, these properties have a comprehensive plan designation, our base comprehensive plan of industrial. Under our old code, industrial allowed three options. Light, light, light industrial, heavy industrial, and campus industrial. So we, under the old code, when you were annexed in, a zoning designation was not automatically given to you. So what has happened is these properties have remained FU10, which is future urban 10 under Clackamas County jurisdiction, under their zoning. So they're completely inside the city limits, surrounded by city services, however, they still have a, or a zoning designation of Clackamas County. So as part of the update that we did, if you were to annex in now and you were zoned industrial, you would automatically go to campus industrial zoning designation. So we're proposing to change these parcels that have the county FU10 zoning designation to the city designation of campus industrial. There are also several small changes. What we have, what you'll see mostly in the downtown area are what we call split zones. And that's a parcel that through mapping error over time, or a neighboring zoning designation just being aligned incorrectly, you would have a parcel that has a residential or a mixed use downtown and another zone on it. So what we're trying to do here is clean up those properties. Some examples would be the right, the railroad right of way. It has several zoning designations on it just because it stretches throughout the whole downtown, but it's one tax lot. So it's, this is a housekeeping issue on majority of those smaller ones that you see. There was also a piece in, in Kanema where there was historic commercial on the front and R6 in the back, even though it was the same tax lot. We've proposed to take that to the historic commercial designation, which expands the uses allowed, and it still allows the R6 uses that were originally on the back part of that tax lot, even though it was all one large tax lot. So this is an attempt by the city to try and clean up split zones throughout the city. Staff has received some requests from the public. Mr. Dan Fowler has requested that some property in downtown located on the corner of Jefferson and 14th be rezoned from the comprehensive plan designation of medium density to mixed use downtown, and that the zoning be changed from R3.5 to mixed use downtown. The subject site is adjacent to the mixed use downtown zone and is separated from the surrounding medium density residential by a steep change in elevation. Staff would recommend changing the property as requested. Second request was received from Mr. Ryan Smith located at 615 McLaughlin Boulevard. Propose that the comprehensive plan designation of low density residential to mixed use corridor, and that the zoning be changed from R6 to historic commercial. The subject site is a split zone, and the front portion of the property is zone historic commercial, and the rear portion of the property is zoned R6. Staff would recommend this change. There were two instances of this in Kanema, and we feel it is appropriate. As stated, you can still use the R6 designation. It's an outright permitted use in the historic commercial zone. It just expands the uses allowed on that single tax lot. Mr. Rocky Younger has requested that the properties located east of Malala and north of Beaver Creek Road, where the Walmart application was submitted on, be rezoned from the comprehensive plan designation of mixed use corridor to commercial, and that the zoning be changed from mixed use corridor 2 to general commercial. The subject site has access to Malala Avenue and has been zoned mixed use corridor 2, which requires pedestrian oriented, orientated development in support of the Malala corridor plan, and requires a conditional use permit for the development of a building in excess of 60,000 square feet. Staff would not recommend changing this property as requested. I guess I, I won't read through a complete summary of all the changes, I guess, unless you'd like me to. We can go back and revisit those if you have specific questions on certain issues. And I'll just go into the decision making criteria. Under 1768 of the Oregon City zoning code, contains criteria for approval of zone changes, as well as Chapter O of the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. Criteria A is that the proposal will be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive That the public facilities and services, water, sewer, transportation are presently capable of supporting the uses. The land uses authorized by the proposal are consistent with the existing or planned function, capacity, and level of service of the transportation system, and the statewide planning goals shall be addressed if the comprehensive plan does not contain specific policies, which ours does. The plan implementation process, the process to implement the plan and ensure that the desires of the community are accurately represented requires a continuous review and, when necessary, amendments to the plan. As part of the approval of the existing comp plan, the city commission determined it was necessary to revisit these adopted goals and policies, as well as code amendments. Staff was directed to expand the goals and policies concerning affordable housing in Oregon City, and to develop a policy concerning the redevelopment of the historic downtown. As part of this process, additional amendments to the plan and zoning map and the municipal code have been made. These amendments are necessary to implement the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Adequacy of the plan to guide land use actions. The plan as adopted on May 19th adequately guides land use actions and includes an examination of transportation, development, housing, and population growth in Oregon City. Staff had proposed the addition of a policy to Chapter 2, land use, and the addition of a new goal in supporting policies to Chapter 10, housing. Additional background information was provided in the housing chapter. The additional goals and policies will effectively guide the future land use actions concerning the redevelopment of the historic downtown, which is now called the Downtown Design District, and the provision for and protection of affordable housing in Oregon City. Whether the plan still reflects communities' needs, desires, attitudes, and conditions. As stated, the, the plan was adopted on May 19th of 2004 and reflected the needs, desires, and attitudes of the community, as based on that, the public process that we went through. The adopted plan included a citizens' technical advisory committee and several open houses and work sessions with the planning commission and city commission. Since the adoption of the plan, there have been three comments submitted concerning the goals and, there have been no comments submitted concerning the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and there have been three requests, as I stated earlier, for map amendments, as well as changing to the garage standards that are in the Oregon City Municipal Code. We were working through the garage standards, which we've had a work session with you last weekend. Addition of updated factual information. Factual information on housing needs by income level was provided by the 2000 U.S. Census and utilized in the development of the plan that was adopted on May 19th. And the plan also responds to targets for future population employment growth provided by metro. Policies in support of metro requirements and factual information are reflected in the changes to the plan. No, new factual information is being provided through this process rather supporting metro's goals and policies in our housing section of our comprehensive plan. Concerning the requested zoning change, the proposal shall be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposed changes are consistent. The proposed rezoning of the split zone properties will provide consistency with the surrounding land uses and clarification concerning the allowed uses on the sites. The proposed zone changes from R10 to R8 will provide consistency with the surrounding properties zoned R8 single family. The properties have an existing comprehensive plan designation of low density residential, which allows the proposed R8 zoning designation on them. The upzone will encourage the redevelopment and infill of vacant and underdeveloped lots, maximizing the efficient use of the existing infrastructure and lands currently available within the city limits and urban growth boundary. The proposed rezoning from future urban 10 to campus industrial of the industrial properties to the north of Glen Oak and west of Beaver Creek will encourage the redevelopment of these sites as well, to manufacturing employment uses, and potentially provide compatible uses with Clackamas Community College and Oregon City High School for educational programs as desired in the comprehensive plan. The sites are located within the city, however, they are maintained under the Clackamas County zoning jurisdiction. Services are currently available in Glen Oak Road and can be made available in Beaver Creek Road, maximizing the efficient use of the infrastructure and the lands currently available. The public facilities and services such as water, sewer, transportation are presently capable of supporting the uses allowed by the zone, or can be, can be made available prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy. The changes proposed are consistent. The public facilities planned for these areas can generally support the new uses, as Oregon City utilities have adequate capacity for new uses within the city limits. The proposed zone change from R10 to R8 will not significantly increase the maximum density. It would be an increase from 4.4 units per acre to 5.5 units per acre. It's extremely minimal when you're looking at impacts on services, considering the size of these lots that we're considering. It would not create a significant demand, a significantly more different demand than the existing zone. Increased flexibility with respect to setbacks in lot sizes may encourage more efficient use of land and result in more efficient provision of services. The proposed zone change from FU10, future urban 10, the county designation to camp, to campus industrial, would implement the zoning designation that was planned for these properties, which would not create additional demands on public services. These properties have been zoned and public services have been planned with the comprehensive plan designation of industrial. Therefore, the rezones would not have a negative impact on the ability of the area to be served by public facilities and services. The land uses authorized by the proposal are consistent with the existing or planned function, capacity, and level of service of the transportation system. As I discussed earlier, the proposed zone change from R10 to R8 is minimal in terms of density increase of 1.1 unit per acre, and that the zoning of those properties has been planned for already and has been taken into consideration when creating the transportation system plan, the water master plans, and those supporting documents. The statewide planning goals, consistency with the statewide planning goals is met through compliance with our comprehensive plan, which implements the statewide planning goals. I would also like, I've handed out three letters that I had received prior to tonight's hearing, and I've put those on the dais for you. Exhibit A is a nine-page letter dated August 20th, 2004, from Mr. Crisp. Exhibit B is a one-page letter dated August 20th, 2004, from Ms. McGinnis. And Exhibit C is a four-page letter dated August 23rd, 2004, and it's from a Ms. Colfield. So I provided you for those for your review. And any exhibits entered tonight will, will enter into the record, and I'll make copies and get those to you tomorrow for you to review. At this time, staff would recommend, after tonight's hearing, that we continue this hearing to October 11th, 2004, in order to address concerns, as well as finish up some additional language concerning the garage standards, which you'll probably hear testimony on tonight.
Okay, and then just for clarification, you said there were three requests, Younger, Fowler, and who was the third?
Mr. Rick Smith, I believe.
Ryan Smith.
Ryan Smith.
And what was his request?
His request was in Kanema along 99E.
Oh.
To have his split, his property was split zone historic commercial and R6.
Okay, I remember that part of it.
Yeah.
I just didn't get the person connected with the property there. All righty.
Any questions of staff, or should we open it up for public testimony?
Okay, Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Is it possible to adopt everything but the standards around garages today, or do we need to do it all in October?
I would recommend doing it in October. We keep the package together.
Anybody else?
Right now.
There was one other clarification. I spoke with some property owner who is up on, up in Park Place on Clackamas River Drive, and they have a split zone property that's R10 and general industrial on the north side of Clackamas River Drive, and R, oh, I'm sorry, R8 and general industrial on the north side, and R10 and general industrial on the south side of Clackamas River Drive. We would recommend leaving that split zone. They have a situation where they have a general industrial use on the property. They bought the property with that understanding that it was a split zone. We feel that that whole area up around Clackamas River Drive needs to be reviewed on, on a much larger scale. So at this time, we would recommend taking those two pieces off and just leaving them as a split zone as they are until we can clarify how, what we want to see up on Clackamas River Drive.
Okay. All righty.
All right.
Okay, well, I think we're ready then to go ahead and open it for public comment. Usually, public comment is five minutes. If you're speaking for a group, you can have up to 15 minutes. When you come forward at the table, you have to be sure and remember to state your name and address for the record.
And we'll start with Joan Mitchell. And I'm going to, she submitted a letter, and it's going to be entered as Exhibit D.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Joan Mitchell. Property is at 393 Warner Parrot. And right now, right now, it is zone R3.5 in the back portion of the property.
There we go. Okay. Do you want me to state that over again?
Sure, please.
My name is Joan Mitchell. Property is at 393 Warner Parrot. You'll have to bear with me on this. I'm new to this, so I'm learning. Right now, the property is zoned R3.5, the back portion. Front portion is zone R10. The lot itself is approximately 18,000 square feet, and I would just like the opportunity to put another single family dwelling behind, and so I'm not sure what you would allow as far as zoning is concerned. You know, if you want to go R8, I think that's what's being asked, but I just want the opportunity to put a home back there.
Okay, well, a 3.5 zoning allows you to do, you know, anything from minimum to maximum, actually. You could do a lot, or you could do.
Right.
And I guess just for clarification, I've had some conversations. This parcel, we're proposing to take it to R10. It has a comprehensive plan designation of low density residential, and that's what everything surrounding it is. There was a subdivision developed directly to the north of her, of Ms. Mitchell's site, and it looks like the zoning map was extended, and it, and it picked up the back half of her property and zoned it R3.5.
Oh.
So you got a split zone, R3.5, R10, and then the rest is R10. Staff is recommending taking it to R10, but asked her to come in and, and talk about, you know, the possibility of going to an R3.5.
Well, an R10 zone would not allow her to build a second house on the property.
You can do an accessory built, you can do an accessory dwelling unit, however, she needed something a little bit larger than that for the situation that she's in.
But in the future, I'll have more documentation ready in October. Right now, I don't have that with me.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so you're on the record, and we'll wait for your submit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Want me to turn this off?
No.
No. Ms. Marjorie Hughes, and she submitted testimony, and it's going to be entered as Exhibit E.
My name is Marjorie Hughes. I live at 12821 South Marysville Lane in Oregon City, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I come, and I understand that you are looking at the garage standards. I represent a number of home builders, and I brought pictures of the houses that have been built in the last 10 years, and for you to look at. Our, our request is that we relook at the changes that require a house not to be able to build a three-car garage on it. Most of the houses, if you look at the pictures, most of the houses, they're, the garages are set forward to allow for a front yard and shorter driveways. Three-car garages always extend more than 40% of the house, or in most cases. And we're just wanting to know what the reasoning was behind changing that. When I did my search for the houses in the last six months, hundreds have been sold in that, in that configuration, and we're just wondering why the home builders are being asked to change all their plans to build in Oregon City. And, and, you know, if they're, if it's a safety issue or some other reason that we're, we're not identifying, we'd like to know what that is.
Okay, and how is it that you're representing several builders?
I'm a broker.
Okay. Well, of course, people are going to buy what's out there, so that's, you know, the housing market is so hot that what's out there, they buy.
Right, well, and that's what they're buying.
Right.
You know, is the, is the one and two stories with three-car garages, which puts their boat and, and their vehicles off the road and into, you know, into a garage. And we're just wondering why we're, why it's being changed, that you can't have a stubout on your garage, which of course makes the house less expensive. The more, the more pavement you have to put in, the farther the driveway goes back, the closer the house gets to the front, you know, to the front road.
Well, there's a lot of information in the, the proposed standards that if you haven't had a chance to read those yet, they would probably clear up a lot of your questions. We're not, not allowing that garages would be able to come forward, but if they do come forward, they would come forward with some modifications to them. Part of the reasoning behind that is because we're trying to create more neighborhood-friendly neighborhoods and, you know, trying to get away with what's commonly referred to as the snout house, which is less friendly and puts your house, a garage on the street instead of a home on the street. I'm sure Mr. Lejoie could weigh in on this issue, being an architect, he's much more familiar with the design standards that, that apply to housing development. You know, some of the, some of the things that we see as, as we drive through the neighborhoods and these three stories, three-car garages that take up, you know, 50 or 60% of the front of a house, you know, it's all garage and very little house, and we think that there is some room for design standards to be adopted. And we think that there is some room for design standards to be adopted that would help to have a little bit user-friendly homes to our neighborhoods.
I, I live in one of those three-car garage houses and part of my house is built behind the garage. I mean, that's, that was so that the house would, you know, fit. And I, and my house is built on a 13,000 square foot lot. And, you know, and, and I guess I would ask if you haven't, that you drive through some of the neighborhoods that are, that are being built where we're accommodating the new buyers, which are the empty nesters and that are looking for the one-story, but they have the RV and they have the, you know, the boats and so on. And so, of course, we're hoping that people will keep their vehicles off the streets and, and, you know, and, and maybe that's what we're seeing, that that may not happen if, you know, if, if the garages are back behind and, or are far, you know, farther back than they are. And in most cases, if you look at the pictures that I brought in, and that's out of three of the subdivisions that have been built in the last 10 years. And most of those houses, the garage doesn't, isn't out more than maybe 10 feet. I mean, the house I live in, that garage is out 10 feet, but it allowed for a bedroom and a, and a bathroom to be behind the garage. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dan Berg, and he has two letters that are going to be submitted, Exhibits F and G.
Dan Berg, 20122 South Malala Avenue, Oregon City. I'd just like to enter my two letters into the record this evening and give you a week or so to digest it and then catch you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Ernie Platt.
Good evening, Chair Carter, Commissioners. Ernie Platt, representing the Home Builders Association of Metro Portland, 15,555 Southwest Bangy Road, Lake Oswego. I wish to make comments addressed towards the garage standards also. We've had the opportunity to work with staff, several builders and I, we've made great progress. I guess I would have to offer the opinion on balance that builders, home builders, members of the home builders would prefer there not be design standards on single-family homes at all. But, given where you're at and the concerns you've addressed here tonight, it is possible to have, have standards that are workable. And I think the discussions we had with the staff, I've seen the notes from your work sessions from last week, it's moving in a positive direction. And all I would ask is give us a bit more time, I guess you've indicated continuance of this matter anyway, give us a bit more time to hone those standards into some precise dimensions, criteria, architectural features that will make, make this system work and provide alternatives to the garage-forward, snout house, if you will, design. So with that, I would just ask for further opportunity to continue to work with staff and to develop these standards that can be made to work.
Good.
Any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Tam Seesholz.
Hi, my name's Tam Seesholz and I live at 14450 South Holcombe. And I'm here concerning the removal of farming from the permitted uses when the zoning changes went through. I think that we need to revisit this issue.
Removal of farming?
Yes, clause D, permitted uses, farms, commercial or truck gardening and horticultural nurseries on a lot not less than 20,000 square feet in area. It's my understanding that that was removed during all the zone changes. And we, we need to revisit that issue. I think that that's an issue that has potential to significantly impact the community, the areas outside city limits and within the urban growth boundaries that are slated for incorporation, as well as the whole, a whole network of support services, feed stores, veterinary services, et cetera. I have a letter here from Cheyenne Meats that states that they're also very concerned about this issue. My family moved here a year ago in June from downtown Portland after checking with zoning to start up end-of-the-trail gourmet goat cheese. We've spent significant resources and energy in setting up a farm on a three-acre lot and starting a herd and learning all about goats and cheesemaking. And now, when we're about six months away from filing with the state to become a dairy, we're told that we're not zoned for farming. And I, I think that's a real shame. I think it's a turning of our back on history, too.
Is your property inside the city limits?
It is inside the city limits. It's right along Holcombe Ridge Development. There's a watershed between us and, I'm not, I'm not anti-development. I don't, I don't have a problem with high-density housing. We moved here from downtown Portland, you know, that part doesn't bother me. But what bothers me is not being allowed to continue with my dreams and goals and to suddenly be told no halfway through a project. I'm opposed to that.
Yeah, I don't remember having any discussion about this particular topic, actually.
It was early on in the zone, zoning changes of the first time around. Wow, that was a long time ago.
And what's the location again?
14450 South Holcombe Boulevard. It's just across the watershed from the Holcombe Ridge Development.
Just to the west of Holcombe Ridge.
I know I'm not the only one out there that had this kind of dream. It affects anybody who wants to plant a tree farm to pay their property taxes or truck gardening for retirement, as well as, I said, a whole network of support services for farming. I think that we need to open this up to more public discussion before it's really and truly a done deal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, what is the land around you zoned? Is it planned for higher-density residential?
Yes, it is.
Higher density being R10.
We're also right across from...
Clackamas County Housing Authority.
The public housing and they're densifying that, too. And again, I don't have a problem with densifying, just let me be. And I think that it would be a shame to lose that urban feel. I mean, that's part of what people move here for is, you know, farm fresh eggs and you pick blueberries.
Exactly. Thank you.
Ms. Jackie Hammond-Williams.
Thanks.
The testimony from, oops, I'm sorry, this is from, the Cheyenne Meats and Sauce will be entered as Exhibit H.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jackie Hammond-Williams and I live at 14422 South Holcombe Boulevard. I'm here tonight because I recently came back from vacation and found out that there had been a zoning change which affects me greatly. And I guess I'm here appealing that zoning change, following up from Tam. We moved to Oregon City 14 years ago and purchased three and a quarter acres with a view to, once the kids have gone to college, that we could develop this into a organic flower farm, herbs and edible flowers. We were zoned truck farming when we bought the property and we figured it would stay that way. And now we find out that possibly our dreams have dissipated. And my question to you is, I guess, I would like this matter opened up for further discussion with the possibility of maybe getting the zoning changed back to how it was. And I'm also wondering how people find out about these zoning changes. I mean, why were we not notified? We have acreage within the city limits, which there can't be that many people who still hold on to acreage within the city limits. Could there not have been a letter sent so that we could have been there at the planning stage? I hear this happened a long time ago and it's hazy in your mind. So how do we, who live in Oregon City, who are going to be greatly affected by these changes, how do we find out? I told, it was in the paper, I don't read the local paper. It was on TV, I don't know what TV it was on. I can't and don't have the time to come to every meeting, so...
Well, we run into this quite a bit. The city, you know, does as much as possible to advertise, things like that, and it was a long process and a lot of public hearings were conducted to get input on issues like that. And then, as it got closer to having the public hearings, notices were sent actually to each home in the city, which is a huge expense to the city. And sometimes a lot of people just, you know, just didn't realize that that was something that might apply to their property. You know, it's, it's like if it just doesn't trigger something at the time, you miss it, but you're here now and so you have your opportunity to still weigh in and, and...
So what do I do now?
Well, right now, what you're doing is giving testimony to us and, and we are taking in this testimony and the people that went before you, everybody's testimony is taken in and any issues that come up that, that we, you know, feel need to have some further work and consideration on our part, we would deliberate those issues and, and, you know, sometimes we would agree with the, with the person who is coming forward with an issue and sometimes we, we don't. And so that's how the process works. And, you know, this is the first time for us, I think, that we've heard any concern about this type of zoning change. And like I said, you know, I really, in my own mind, don't really remember much discussion about it, you know, early on in the process, because this has been really quite a long process. And it is a process that does, you know, continuously get revisited. So if something isn't working or if something's wrong, you know, it's not absolutely written in stone. It's, you know, it's a living, breathing document that, you know, if, if an issue comes to your attention and it's not working for you, then that's what this process is about.
You know, and I can understand why it's coming, because you don't want large portions of land, you want to have it developed within the city. But, you know, and I understand that people are going to move into the city, but I came so many years ago with this idea and this dream, that it's really quite, you know, devastating to find that this is not going to be able to come to fruition now.
Well, Tony, now that, the way the ordinance would read now is about, you said 20,000 square feet?
What, under the old code, under the old R10, R8 and R6, single-family zones, farms was a permitted use and that was removed.
Truck farming, I'd like to...
Farms, truck and, I don't remember the exact terms.
Truck farming, so long as you took your produce off the site and sold it elsewhere, which is what we were planning to do at farmer's markets.
Okay, we'll enter that in the record.
Tony, I'm not sure how Oregon City's process works, but I know in Clackamas County, you can continue to do your existing use, it's called a non-conforming use, for as long as you own the property. It's when you come in with a development application that you would not be able to...
Yeah, and, but sadly, I haven't started yet. I mean, this was something that was coming up maybe next year when I got my last kid off to college. And so I haven't actually got an up-and-going concern, but it's something that we were putting out there next year to apply for a permit to do this.
Okay, and her property would be zoned R10, is that correct?
It already is. It's inside the city limits, yes.
Yeah, R8, I think, actually.
R8, okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
And I'll enter in the Chapter 1710, R8, single-family dwellings, district standards under the old code. And section permitted use D was farms, commercial or truck gardening and horticultural nurseries on a lot not less than 20,000 square feet in area. Commercial buildings are not permitted, was what was removed from the permitted uses of R10, R8 and R6.
And if that person owned the property today, and if they've owned that property prior to any of these zone changes, they, they would be, would they not be grandfathered in?
With an existing farm already?
Well, with an existing, right, with an existing farm, they would be, correct?
Correct.
But...
If they wanted to start one today?
Then they would not be.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Okay, and there's no differentiation made between, on the old code, it said anything less than 20,000 square feet. We haven't made any differentiation about property over 20,000 square feet?
Actually, the code said those uses on a lot not less than. So it had to be over 20,000 square feet under the old code. And it was just completely removed under the new code.
Okay.
There was, no, it was not allowed on a lot of four acres or anything like that, no.
Okay. Alrighty, so who's next?
Mr. Mark Sax, S, I believe it's S-A-X-E?
If you don't write if I ask the owner of the properties, I have a question, is there a consideration for me?
Sure, what was his name?
I don't have his name. Is the owner of commercial property at 220A, South Second Street here tonight? Guess not. All right, thanks.
Sure.
My name's Mark Sax. I live at 538 Holmes Lane in Oregon City and I have a business, Clackamas Towing. My main address is in Clackamas. And then I have two storage lots, other than where I do business from, which is how most medium to large tow companies are set up. And one of those two is at 220A, South Second Street in Oregon City. I've been there about three years now and the business that was there before me was also a tow business, the main difference being that was their main location. Recently, Clackamas County Sheriff's Department, who we contract with, wanted everyone to check on their zoning. So I checked on my zoning and they said, well, you're, you're not qualified to run a towing business from that location. I said, well, that's not my main, that's not where I, my main business address is, that's just where I store vehicles. And they pointed out in the regulations where it says, under prohibited uses, one of them is storing of vehicles. Now, I can understand why a person would write that up that way, because most people, when they think of a tow business, they think of how most tow companies literally are. And that's a small office with a very large or with a storage yard, that's typically a chain-linked fence with slats in it and you can basically see right through it. So what you're looking at is a bunch of junky cars and rep cars and it's not a very pretty site. A very small number of tow companies have a building and they store their cars inside the building to where you can't see the cars. What I have on Second Street is a building with a large bay door and a people door and neither one of them have a, a window. And the other thing is, we hardly ever use that location. In fact, on that section of, of the street, there's literally two residences and I got a little letter from each one of them stating that, the one person said that in their estimation, we probably come and go one to two times a month. And the other person, they couldn't even say, I mean, they put down don't know, because it's literally so infrequent that they couldn't even say how many times we come and go from there per month. Also, both of them said that they would prefer that we stayed there, because it's pretty much common sense that if another business moves in, they're going to be more high-impact than, than a business that comes and goes from that building two or three times a month and, and there's not people parking in front and whatever. I asked what could be done about this and they said, well, you could get a conditional use permit if you could prove that there's been a tow business there all the way back prior to 1980, non-stop. Well, that's going to be kind of hard to do the way the business records are, the business license records are. I think they're, not criticizing anyone, but I think they're not very accurate. There's an auto repair shop in the building that's been there since 1994. And I said, well, how did they get in? And they said, well, they got a business, they got their license in 94. And I said, okay, well, who was in that location before them? They said, well, nobody. So I'm wondering, first of all, I'm wondering how they were able to get their business license as an auto repair shop, if it wasn't zoned for that. And I'm wondering what happened to the records on the business license for the tow company that was there before me. But mainly, I'm here to point out that the residences that are affected by this would literally prefer that we stay there, because we are so low-impact. And I guess I need to know what I have to do to, to get this rectified, other than, the only suggestion I've been given so far is to apply for a complete zone change.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can get a little bit of clarity on here.
We're going to have to meet with, with Mr. Sax and come back to you.
Okay, because the first thing that leaps to my mind is if you're licensed at one location, but you're basically operating out of two, is that the situation? I mean, that would be a question that I would...
We're going to need to, I don't...
Don't know. Okay, yeah, there's a lot of misinformation here. And if you're operating already under an existing license before the zone change, you're grandfathered in. And that means that you're allowed to operate your business at that location for as long as you're conducting business at that location. If you... If you choose to sell that location, you would not then be able to sell it to someone to continue on in the business that you're doing it. Once a business changes hands, then at that time it would change use, basically.
You can, you can continue the use as long as you don't continue it, discontinue it for more than one year.
Right.
I'd like to sit down and talk to you afterwards, if that'd be possible, and probably help clarify some of this.
Could we do it a different time other than tonight?
Yeah, definitely.
Great, thanks a lot.
Okay, because I, I think there's just too much misconception here and the facts aren't on the table quite. So just some clarification needs to be brought forward.
That's kind of the impression I'm getting, is that I'm getting some misinformation too, so I think you're right. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
Ms. Lisa Peterson?
Hi, my name is Lisa Peterson and I live at 19450 South Falcon Drive. We, my neighbor, received the letter about tonight's meeting and the proposed zone changes from R-10, R-8, whatever. We didn't even get a notice and we basically wanted to come to ask for the continuance so that we could get together with our neighbors and find out more information about this and how it affects us. So basically, it is continued, so that's all we need, but we do have some concerns.
So you're in an area that was annexed in and the zone is going to be changed from R-10 to the existing R-8? Okay, okay, well, the continuance then is till October 11th, is that right?
If you.
If we decide to do that.
Assuming that we do.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol Brandon?
I guess I am the neighbor, Carol Brando, I live at 19430 South Falcon Drive. And again, I got the letter like Thursday last week, there hasn't been time to even consider it. And I've been checking around and talking to people about the conditions involved in this. Generally, I mean, I have a neighbor across the street I know who's, you know, extremely irate for the idea and it's, it, there's so much more that can be said. To divide it into R-8 isn't logical because it's a 2,000, it's a 200 by 100 lot, you can't get three lots out of that. So to sit there and say you're going to put it into R-8, I know it can go larger than, but there's no reason to, to be zoning that differently. So I want to do more research and I want to do more, so I am asking for that continuance.
Okay, great.
Would anyone else in the gallery like to speak? I have no more slips.
Okay, one gentleman just raised his hand.
My name is Roger Shirley. My address, business address is 13635 Northwest Cornell in Portland. We own property in Oregon City. I represent Pan Pacific Retail Properties, we're the owners of the Oregon City Shopping Center. And my specific reason for being here tonight, without taking too much time, we, we bought the center 1998. We've spent over a million dollars renovating the shopping center in the last few years and we're presently 98% occupied, which we're thrilled about. And we're very proud of our shopping center and we even won an award from the City of Oregon City for, for the work we've done. We're, we're certainly in support of the city's desire to create a more attractive downtown area. And as you may know, the Oregon City Shopping Center was joined with the riverfront downtown area as being under the new zoning in the mixed-use downtown district. And we're very concerned about that. We did receive information many years ago and as you said, it's been a long process. But when the actual zoning, rezoning took place, we were very surprised that we were a part of the rezone. We were a part of the comprehensive plan change, but in terms of the zoning map, we weren't. And so when that happened, we were very surprised. In fact, in the last 60 days, we, as a result of the zone change, just about lost a deal, a lease deal of 80,000 square feet, which you can imagine had, would have had a tremendous impact on our shopping center. And I guess what I'd like to do is, I'd like the commission to consider whether they would consider the Oregon City Shop, the Oregon City Shopping Center to fit with the definition of the mixed-use downtown district. And I'm just going to read this, it's one paragraph. It says, "The mixed-use downtown district is designed to apply within the traditional downtown core along Main Street and includes the north end area, generally between Fifth Street and Abernathy Street, and some of the area bordering, bordering McLaughlin Boulevard. A mix of high-density residential, office, and retail uses are encouraged in this district with retail and services uses on the ground floor, office and residential uses on the upper floors. The emphasis is on those uses that encourage pedestrian and transit use. This district includes an overlay design sub-district for the historic downtown area that design standards for this sub-district require a continuous storefront facade featuring streetscape amenities to enhance the active and attractive pedestrian environment." That doesn't sound to me like the Oregon City Shopping Center in any form. I understand that the city is required to do long-term planning, but the city doesn't own this property and we certainly have no short or even long-term plans to redevelop by this definition. So we're very concerned that we're included as a part of the downtown core by definition. This area is certainly not a pedestrian-friendly area, nor does it seem to fit with any of the other criteria for the district. So we're, we're not here to officially oppose, but what this does is, is severely restrict our ability to redevelop the property in the future. And that's our great concern. And we'd certainly be willing to meet with the city, but we would like to be considered something other than mixed-use downtown. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
I have a question for you, sir. It seems like this rezone would allow you more flexibility rather than less because it gives the opportunity to also add office or residential in addition to the commercial.
Well, what, what the zoning does is it restricts our ability, in the specific case I quoted of the lease that we almost lost, part of the restriction is a prohibited use on outside storage and, and sales area. And we had no idea this would be rezoned. And this particular tenant required outside storage. Now, because we couldn't do that, we had to completely restructure the deal. And we now are going to have to build a structure and, to enclose their storage area and make this an interior storage area as opposed to what they thought and we thought was available. So that's, that's the specific example of how this restricts us. But it doesn't seem to fit. It's just not a fit for what our plans are and what we're doing now. I understand what you're saying, the city would like this, they'd like this area to be a rental station, I suppose. And that's not part of our plan. That's very extensive and expensive redevelopment. So if we can, if we come to the city in the future with any kind of plan to change our building, we're going to have to go through design standards that we don't have to now or hadn't, didn't have to. So we, it's been changed, it's been, and so we're very concerned that we're going to be restricted to what we do now, so.
Okay. Is anyone else wishing to come forward? Okay, so I'm wondering if we need to continue the public hearing until our next date as well as, you know, work on some of these issues that have come forward?
That'd be Stash's recommendation.
I would support continuing, especially since the garage standards are new and many people haven't had a chance to review that. We need to give them several chances to think about it and, and work together to come up with something that's acceptable.
Any other comments? Questions?
I second that, I think that's a good idea. It's a good idea.
And there are a couple, a couple of issues here that I'd like to have some discussion about, a work session or whatever it might be. Okay.
A simple question on, in October.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, can you please just? What, you need it to be on TV though and to have you on the record, sir.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, I need your name and address, just make it easy on me.
Jim Gum, 19421 South Falcon Drive. Simply put, will these folks present tonight or new arrivals be able to have any input in October or will it be a final decision for that night?
Well, that's what we're discussing right now. We would be leaving the public hearing open, which means that people who come on October 11th will still be able to testify, depending on how things go that evening and what our agenda is and so on and so forth. Usually at that point, we would close the public hearing and deliberate and make our decision on the issues, more than likely unless for some reason it's, you know, there's some reason to do another continuance.
No, I'm sorry, I was, I got this letter just like my neighbors did. I was a little offended by it because to me, it simply said, well, it's going to happen at R-8 and you will have to sell your property. That's not my intent. I want to provide it for my children and let them live there as long as they want.
Well, the city doesn't dictate that you have to sell your property.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out from you folks. You're all new to me, just like you, I'm new to you.
Right.
I've been here 33 years and I'm annexed without any warning. We're part of the city now, we're trying to figure out without stepping on your toes, but we don't want our toes stepped on either.
Right. Well, the good news is that you've received your notices and that you actually read them and you're here tonight to be on the record and, and establish your issues and that's what we need and the process is working. So, hooray for that.
I guess I'd just say, please feel free to contact the Oregon City Planning Department. My name's Tony Conkle and we can walk you through any questions you may have and concerns and whatnot.
Well, a lot of the concerns is just not full information and, you know, these, these issues are, you know, legalistic and they're hard to understand. They're hard for the planning commission to always be able to understand the legal implications of things. So, you know, be patient with yourselves as you walk through something that affects you personally. Okay, well, then, one more?
Is, on the land use issue and farming, is there any way that we can come away from this meeting with a public hearing date or any kind of schedule for the agenda? I'd like to circle the wagons and.
Well, again, the public hearing, if we make a motion and agree upon that, would be October 11th. And between now and October, well, before October 11th, because any materials that you submit would have to be submitted a week ahead of time so that we can get them in our packet when we get our packet for that particular meeting. And that gives us a chance to, you know, read all the material and look over everything and what you're presenting and your issues and your evidence and so on and so forth. That's part of what this process is.
We would like to have any written comments a week before, so on October 4th, that way we can send it to them. But if, if it doesn't happen, we'll just enter them into the record as we did tonight. I mean, the public record is still open, so you could submit written testimony at the hearing as well. So it is still open.
October 4th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so I guess we're ready to make a motion then to continue the public hearing to date certain of October 11th.
So moved?
A second.
Hopefully with all new information submitted before October 4th, because we do prefer to have it in our packet so we can read it ahead of time. It gives us a chance to get the stuff in our brains.
Okay. Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner LeJua?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Powell?
Aye.
Chairperson Carter?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 to continue to October 11th.
Okay, and thank you very much, it's very encouraging when the process is actually working the way it's supposed to. This has been a good night for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any, let the room clear out a little bit. No, not yet. Yeah, I just want to.
I don't have anything additional for the legislative action.
I just wanted to ask.
Sure. Excuse me, folks, if you'd like to continue talking, if you could please move outside, we have to finish up our hearing. And as soon as we're done, we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, they have small maps.
They're on the website, aren't they?
Yes.
You get one little snapshot and you don't have a clue where you're at. I mean, I haven't even found what I'm looking for on the big map.
Yeah, they, they are printed, they are accessible.
Was there any extra copies of your agenda?
There should be some out on the table.
Table was empty when we got here.
Oh. We, yeah, Tony can get you one.
I'm sorry.
Not very well, not without my attorney.
I just had one burning question about wanting to be, you know, updated about where we are in the process with our Luba appeal on the comp plan, since we're here talking about the comp plan tonight.
The city has compiled the supplemental record and, city filed their record. The, the appellant had 21 days to review that and submitted 14 objections to that record. We've worked with him, we've put together a supplemental record that we believe addresses all of the objections that were raised. I believe they now have 14 days to review it, 21 days to file their brief, we have 21 days to respond, and then we will be going off to Luba. I don't have a date yet for when that motion will be heard.
So we're definitely into the, way into the fall with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, unless we can reach a resolution prior.
And then as far as being able to have a work session to discuss some of these issues, is that something that we're?
Yes.
Able to do?
I'm planning on the first, Wednesday, September 1st, so next Wednesday, and then two weeks after that as well, if necessary. We have, we'll go with our regular work session schedule. Depending on, because of the continuance on the 14th, we may be able to have a work session that night as well. Since I'm unaware of anything that's going to be on the, on that hearing night, that I don't have anything yet. I haven't checked with other staff members to see if they have anything, but I'm not aware of anything at this time.
Okay, can you just run those dates by me then, again, you're thinking of?
September 1st is a Wednesday and September 15th would be a regular Wednesday work session in the city hall lunchroom and that would be at 5:30. And then we have a regular meeting on September 13th, which at this time, I'm not aware of anything on that agenda, so we could have a work session then as well. At 7:00 PM in the city hall chambers.
Okay.
And as a point of information, I won't be here on September 1st, so if there's any problems with the quorum, I hope not.
I believe that we're, we passed the quorum is based on how many people are appointed.
Right, you know, I read that, I've got it in my thing here. It's like every old ordinance regarding the planning commission says that it's a quorum based on the appointed members.
Oh.
Right. That's correct, you are not appointed, that's right. And I had a question regarding.
And I had a question regarding, um, work sessions, and I, I've, and recently had my, uh, I've had some changes in life, and I don't have quite the freedom I once had, and I'm wondering, is, is there a reason that we're doing it five thirty because of the, prior to the city commissions?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what it was?
Initially, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm working to try and get those nights, Wednesdays and Thursdays, off, so I can do that.
It'd be Wednesday and Wednesday.
Well, yeah, Wednesday and Thursday every week, so that means every Wednesday I'd have off, right?
He's scheduling his...
I'm trying to, yeah, I'm just trying to get it every week. I'll have the same days off, Wednesday and Thursday, so I'll have Wednesday nights. But in the meantime, I just want everybody to know, I mean, there may be situations that I, I just can't get here from where I'm way out there, and I just want you to be aware it isn't, because of lack of trying, I'm just, it's difficult for me to, to do that, so, um, I'm, but I am trying to fix that, 'cause it's...
Yeah, the work sessions aren't as critical as the hearings.
No, Monday's generally, seven o'clock's generally not a problem.
And I guess if it is an issue, we could obviously revisit the time. We used to do them on Mondays at seven PM, so, yeah.
I, I would be open to changing it to a date that works better for everyone, if that works for staff.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
It's a Wednesday, and it's not at five thirty, and it ends up being six thirty, or whatever. It's okay with me.
Okay, well, I, like I say, I'm hoping to solve that problem. If I can't, then I'll bring it back up, we can discuss it.
I mean, what we, what we originally did with the five thirty was to try and consolidate staff time, so that they're not staying an extra night when they don't have to. So that was to be efficient about our staff time.
Try not to grin too big on that one.
Okay, well, any other comments or anything?
Uh, well, I, just something that came up this evening, and I think that I'd like to put this first in consideration, and I don't know if we even can, but, um, Mr. LeJua and I have been talking about, um, temporary, um, temporary, what do you call them? The pop-up buildings.
Carports?
Yeah, pop-up carports, and the, and, you know, whether, and the, and whether we can, or whether we should allow them, and in what situations. Um, they're, they're becoming quite popular, and they're, they're popping up all over, all over the place, and I know there are certain areas they, that we can't, they can't be in, because of the historic districts. But on the other hand, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna take away people's civil rights, but I, but sometimes, I mean, we're really looking at what we're trying to accomplish in town, and that is one of those things that...
It's going the wrong way.
It's an eyesore, and I, and I think it's just something we need to consider, and I don't have a problem having them, but maybe not right on the street. Maybe we put them back further on the property, or something like that. I, just something to think about, maybe a future discussion item.
Yeah, we can work out a little work session, try and do a little research on that for you.
Okay, good.
Um, let's see, the Jennifer's Lu, Jennifer's Plan Unit Development, that was continued for the seven days of new evidence, seven days of rebuttal, and then seven rebuttal from the applicant. Um, I forwarded on the comments that were received as new evidence. Um, the second seven days have passed, um, with no rebuttal, so I am waiting for the rebuttal from the applicant. As soon as I have that, I will forward it to you, um, and then I will enter all that into the record on the hearing on the thirtieth, that special hearing that we're having at seven PM.
All right, next Monday.
Yes.
Same time, same place.
Same time, same place.
Okay, so I think we're ready to adjourn this meeting? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.